Lord, we are meeting today to conduct matters of business. God our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought and speech, impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance today. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will move to approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion, Burks, second blade, Ms. Johnson?
Burks?
Aye.
Blade?
Aye.
Anderson? Butler?
Aye.
Callie? Jenkins?
Aye.
Qualls? Shoeless?
Aye.
Thank you. We'll go to citizens' comments.
We have one tonight, Mr. Randall Nash.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Nash, join us here on the podium.
Thank you very much. My name is Randall Nash. I live over on Highway 96, 1130 Highway 96, and I happen to live right across the road from a piece of property that I saw in the paper today. One of my neighbors called me and I saw in the paper that Mr. Brian Everett, who is my good friend, I hear, and he's going to be speaking tonight. He's got an ordinance, a request before you, and I have some comments regarding that situation. In 1996 timeframe, as executor of the estate of Vera Harrison Buttry, I had her property divided into five, into multiple five acre tracts. The house and three acres were transferred to her daughter Hazel Buttry, and then she bought two more acres to go with that to make her a five acre tract, and she lived there until her passing in 2017. Six tracts that I had divided into five acre tracts initially, I sold to prospective homeowners, and each of these sales included a set of restrictions applicable until December 31st, 2020. Those restrictions included no commercial use and various other restrictions, such as square foot requirements for the house, and I have a copy available. If you would like me to share it with you, this is the copy that was included in each one of those deeds. I'm not here tonight to argue the legality of what Mr. Everett is proposing. I'm here to present to you the intent of my actions in 1996 and my being consistent with that since that time. It was very simple. The primary purpose for these restrictions was to create a spacious residential neighborhood in a wonderful scenic country setting. We were outside the city limits at that time. Since that time, we've been annexed, of course, into the city and been here for a long time. Upon the passing of Hazel Buttry in 2017, I also served as the executor of her estate. As part of that process, I sold the house and five acres to Mr. Brian Everett. We welcomed him into our midst, literally, in the midst of our spacious residential neighborhood. Now, when my wife and I look out the front windows, we have a wonderful view of the nearly century-old house where my wife and her family were raised. I consider Mr. Everett a friend and a good neighbor. This is not a personal matter. We have a wonderful, I'm sorry, but I'm absolutely opposed to seeing this historic piece of property in the middle of a residential neighborhood be zoned commercial. It just doesn't fit. In closing, if I'm not mistaken, I believe the property just adjacent to this property recently came before this commission, and there was an attempt to change it to commercial property, and I believe the gentleman was going to be building storage units, and my understanding is that that was rejected by this body. Thank you, fellas, ladies, gentlemen, for letting me speak tonight. And I'm sure Mr. Everett has some other comments to make at the appropriate time.
Thank you, Mr. Nash. With the amendments, planning commission meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Burks, Anderson, Ms. Johnson?
Burks?
Aye.
Anderson? Blade?
Aye.
Butler?
Aye.
Callie?
Aye.
Jenkins?
Aye.
Qualls? Shoeless?
Aye.
Yeah. We will move to new business, item one. Site plan Nashville Lumber Company, proper located at 7401 Cumberland Drive, Fairview, Tennessee, property owned by Vulcan Holdings LLC. And there are some staff comments. If I could talk Mr. Jenkins into reading them for me?
Yes, sir. City engineer recommends to planning commission that comments associated with irrigation plans be allowed to be approved by staff prior to issuing a grading permit. Upon approval of water authority of Dixon County requirements, all WADC plan modifications will be completed prior to pre-construction meeting. Staff recommends approval of site plan, action by the planning commission, either motion for approval or disapproval of the Nashville Lumber Company site plan.
Thank you, sir. Any additional staff comments tonight, or that's?
I don't have anything additional. We have spoken with Mr. Manners several times about this. He is very interested and ready to move into the community and be a part of Fairview, but also the community of growth around here.
Thank you, sir. Any questions?
I'm going to make a motion to approve, subject to the staff comments, including that all comments associated with the irrigation plan be approved by staff prior to issuing of a grading permit and full approval by the Water Authority of Dixon County prior to pre-construction meetings.
I'll second that.
Burks with the motion, Callie with the second. Any additional discussion? Ms. Johnson?
Burks?
Aye.
Callie?
Aye.
Anderson? Blade?
Aye.
Butler?
Aye.
Jenkins?
Aye.
Qualls? Shoeless?
Aye.
Thank you. Move to new business, item two. Request for annexation, property located at 7322 Valley Road, Fairview, Tennessee, map 69, parcel 82, 50.83 acres. Property owned by Richard L. Lauren and Lauren S. Ray, sorry. No staff comments there. But the board is voting on a positive or a negative recommendation to send to the board commissioners on the annexation.
Mr. Sullivan? Where does this adjoin other city property right now?
Can't see it from this map. It didn't bring over the line. I believe the paperwork I'd sent Friday had a blue line that shows one of the parcels along Highway 100. Looking at this map, it is the top to our right parcel of the roughly one acre parcels between the property and Highway 100. That first one is in the city, and that is where it would abut into the property.
And this abuts over by Castleberry Farms, correct?
No, sir.
Am I thinking of a different one?
That's a different one. Valley Road is what you would see along the left side, looking at this image, and then Walker Road is across from that. So you have Valley Road along the one side, Highway 100, there above that, across from Walker Road.
Okay.
With Liberty to the south, but it does not touch Liberty.
And I can't read any of this right now. Is this one that's on Michael Langford also?
This is...
Or is that the next one?
That's a different one as well. This is Highway 100 going out towards 840. You'll pass the rec center, and I believe Southern Road is the first one you see there on the map, and then the next road is Valley, and it is on Valley, which is roughly halfway between the rec center and 840.
Okay, thank you.
Parcel directly across Highway 100 is Stuff It In Mini Storage, to put in perspective as to where you are. So the connector would be the property across the street from Stuff It In is in the city limits, and this parcel connects to that, to that parcel.
Thank you.
There's like a Lake Wyona, is that what it's called, or something on there?
I believe so.
That I've heard stories. I don't know if they're true. It used to be a swimming hole for the city or something. Any additional questions? So it would come in as R40, is that correct?
That is correct.
Make a motion for a positive recommendation to the board of commissioners?
Second.
Burks, Qualls? Any additional discussion or questions? Ms. Johnson?
Burks?
Aye.
Qualls?
Aye.
Anderson? Blade?
Aye.
Butler?
Aye.
Callie?
Aye.
Jenkins?
Aye.
Shoeless?
Thank you, guys. Item three, new business, request for rezoning, 7361 Northwest Highway, five acres, map 21, parcel 23. Current zoning is RS40, residential, single family. Request for commercial general, property owner Brian Everett?
Hello?
Hey, Mr. Everett.
I do want to point out one thing as far as the map goes. There's a little triangle piece right across the road that is not highlighted yellow. That is also a part of the property, just so everyone is aware.
On the opposite side of Northwest and not 100, is that correct?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. I bought this property from Randall Nash in 2018, and we walked the property together, and he told me in length about the history of this place, and I absolutely fell in love with this house. You know, from the first time I saw it, I just fell in love with it. And then, as I learned the history of it and how long it had been there and who it belonged to, and just the, you know, everybody in Fairview knew Hazel Buttry and knew of this house, and that just meant so much to me. And as I've lived there, it's grown in me, and I've come with a dream and a vision to... I really want to keep this place, this historic place, and I want to share it. I don't want to just keep it to myself. And so my plan and goal is to have this rezoned commercial so that I can turn this house into a future restaurant and a place for people to come and enjoy and socialize and be able to be a part of this wonderful, wonderful land that I was able to purchase. And that's really all I have to say. That's my goal, my intent. Appreciate the consideration.
Thank you, sir.
I have a question. Could I ask you? What's the size of that house? The square footage, do you know?
Top and bottom, it has two floors. Total is just under 2,000 square feet.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question.
I should just stay here right now.
I do love that house...
This is my first time I've done this.
With the red tin roof, right?
It is a silver tin roof.
It's now silver. It used to be red, right?
When I bought it, it was kind of the same color, but it was rusted. So it was kind of a brownish. So yes, it could have been.
If you turn it into a restaurant, as far as traffic goes and parking lot and things like that, what are the plans for that?
I imagine that I, after living there for a year and a half, I feel like at least 1,000 cars drive within 50 feet of my front door as it is right now. I don't expect that to change. It would be the parking that would need to be addressed, and that's something that's not planned. I'm looking at this for, you know, two to three-year timeline. It's not something I have a full plan for yet. But the triangle piece of property that is right across the street would serve as one of the parking spaces. And then there's plenty of space off to the right of my house, and then as well as back into the woods that could be converted into parking space. So there's plenty of level area.
Mr. Sullivan, is that parcel next to it zoned commercial currently? The storage unit piece? You remember? It's not a commercial, okay. Okay, so it did come before it, okay.
Mr. Sullivan, if I remember correctly, there's no commercial general touching that property. This is right in the middle of all residential, correct?
That's what I'm pulling up right now.
I know we looked at that at the board of commissioners when it came for that other parcel. I just can't remember.
Apparently the map shows all residential around it. The parcel to the south is not in the city limits, so we don't have what would be ours zoning on that, but everything abutting and around it is residential.
Currently empty. There are... The parcels to the left and to the right, looking at the map, are both currently empty with no residential structures on the property at all.
I can tell you, at the board of commissioners level, when this was discussed for that other property, the concern was putting commercial property right in the middle of residential. That was the concern that that board had. Doesn't necessarily bind upon this board, but that was a concern. And I share the concern at this level, the same thing. You're asking to take this residential area and put a piece of commercial property right in the middle of it. And I understand you're saying what your plans are, what you would like to do with it. And it sounds like it'd be lovely. The problem is this, once it's commercial, if something happens and you change your mind, you can sell it, and then whatever's proved under commercial zoning can then go there. Something that may not be quite as nice as a restaurant that you're envisioning. It could be a whole list of things that we would have then allowed to be in the middle of this residential area.
My comment is, I understand all the residential on either side, but the long-range view of Fairview is 96 is the main corridor coming in, and eventually it is the main road, in my opinion, that's going to have to go commercial. It's piecemeal as it is today, but it's got to go commercial, and over time, I think the city would be regretful that we didn't help accelerate the commercial aspect of Highway 96.
Mr. Collins, this week we had a brief discussion via email whenever the planning commission agenda was sent out, and we discussed how the future land use and character map has not been fully adopted by the board of commissioners yet. And until it's adopted, we were sort of advised to act under the current ordinances and the current land use map, correct? So if that's the case, then even though right now the draft plan for the 2040 comprehensive plan shows this specific area of Highway 96 along Northwest Highway where those two connect as a commercial center, we have an opportunity to go ahead and allow that to become a commercial general zoning right now to align with a possible future land use map. But I'm kind of stuck between a rock and a hard place. I don't really know where we should make the decision on. Should we make it on what we plan to do possibly in the future that we have an opportunity to do right now? Or should we stick to what we've currently got where, hey, it's residential around? This hasn't been adopted yet.
Did the old map show that corridor as a commercial too? I feel like maybe it did. It's projected or...
The 2012 proposed land use map, it was a part of the 2000 plan, but it was updated as of 2012, and that does show that area as being a commercial area.
But, Mr. Collins, you got more for us?
Sir?
You got more for us? You going to say something?
No, I think...
Okay.
Covers it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. No, sir, not right now. We might bring you back, but...
I would like to make a motion to approve.
So a motion by Qualls, a second by Anderson? We'll go to any additional discussion? I don't know if Mr. Potter has any input on it. We talked briefly about the restrictive covenants on the piece of property does not have any kind of relation to the city or enforcement by the city, just for discussion of that. Any additional discussion?
I would just say to Mr. Nash, thank you for bringing your concerns before us, and I want to respect the fact that there is a lot of good history there, that there are a lot of good memories there. And it's my hope for the future that more good history is made there and that more good memories are made there, and that if Brian's vision comes to fruition, that people can draw together as a community around there. That would be great. I just wanted to say that I respect you bringing that to us, and thank you for that, sir.
I want to add further to the question I asked you about parking. If, you know, this, you do develop this into a... If we pass it, it develops into a restaurant, and a plan comes before the planning commission here in a couple of years, I think it would be really important to address, because that highway is so busy, just extra precautions around safety with maybe an enhanced setback or some barriers, just something to make it feel more residential than just a typical just pull into a commercial parking lot type of situation. So that's just a comment.
Any additional discussion? Ms. Johnson?
Qualls?
Aye.
Anderson? Blade?
Aye.
Burks?
Aye.
Butler?
Aye.
Callie?
Aye.
Shoeless?
Aye.
Jenkins?
Aye.
Mr. Nash, Mr. Everett, thank you guys both for coming tonight. Item four, new business, request for rezoning. Requested zoning RS15, residential, single family. Total combined acreage 61.706 acres. Property owned by BBJ Properties LLC. Current zoning RS40. Requested zoning to RS15. Oh, there's a couple here. Map 46, parcel 11, 13.65 acres. Current zoning R20. Map 46, parcel 16.04, 22.15 acres. Current zoning RS40. Any discussion or questions?
Hi, Mr. Sullivan. This is the one I was thinking of earlier, and I apologize. This is the one that abuts up to Castleberry.
Yes, sir. The south side does butt Castleberry. The west side does, and the east side is along Crowcut Road at the park.
And Castleberry is currently zoned R20?
Correct.
Is it a straight R20 or is it a PUD?
From everything I've seen, it was a straight R20.
Okay. And the owners of this property are asking that this be a R15 PUD, correct? Did I read that right?
Or just an RS15?
Or was it just a straight R15?
Straight RS15, yes.
RS15, okay.
This the piece that already included some approved lots?
This is not... That is, that's why it's coming as two separate items. There are three parcels to this one, but it does not include the previously platted 20 lots and the property that goes along with that. This is just three additional properties that do abut.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Has this property always kind of been a vision of a future extension of Castleberry? Is that, or is this?
From my time at the city, I've heard of it a couple of times being an idea. I have heard of it before as it was part of the vision for it to be all part of it, saying that you'll see the owner of this property and the owner of those lots are the same owners, so that may give you that answer.
Yes, sir. And if there's anyone here tonight on behalf of BBJ Properties that wants to have any discussion, welcome to the podium.
Mr. Sullivan, similar situation to the last item on the agenda. Does this match the current set of land use map with the zoning of RS15?
I just took and pulled that back up. I knew I shouldn't have gotten rid of it already.
I think one did and one didn't.
Okay.
It was a weird line. If you will state your name and if you have anything to say.
Rob Mulcham, SEC, on behalf of my client. My client is looking at purchasing this property from BBJ. BBJ has been in ownership of this property, as well as the other properties in the next item on the agenda. Since the early 2000s, that was part of the original Aiden Woods of Castleberry property on that side. So as part of the next item that's coming up, there were 20 lots that were platted previously as part of the Aiden Woods, Castleberry Phase II, and then adjacent to that is an unused or undeveloped portion of the property next door to Phase II as part of Castleberry, Aiden Woods of Castleberry as well. As part of Phase II, there is a stub street in that plat that connects to what would be the northwest corner of this set of properties that we're looking at today here. So my client, in regards to development of this, is looking at this, asking for the request to rezonate this from RS20 slash RS40 on some of these parcels down to RS15 to allow for development of the property of this section of three lots as RS15, with the understanding that we're going to need to utilize a step system for these three tracts of land because there is no sanitary sewer service over there. So in order to, so in the exchange of requesting for the RS15 zoning would be the giving up some of the land in order to facilitate the step system, and more or less be roughly about the same amount of lots in regards to an R20 or RS20 zoning that's currently on that property or portions of that property. So that's more or less what we're looking for in regards to the request of the rezoning for the RS15 today.
Thank you, sir.
Part of this is residential medium and part of it's residential light, so it's kind of a dividing line there in that for the 2012.
And just for clarification, residential medium and residential light, what are the zonings for those two?
I do not have that information.
Okay.
I think light was more of the R40 perimeter, and the medium was like the R15 or PUDs or things.
Sorry, I told you.
It's at the bottom of the map.
It's on the other corner. The medium density, R20, RS15, RS40. The low density is RS40 and then R20.
Your step system, you know how many acres or parcels it's going to be required for this property?
If we're looking at this from an RS-15 lotting standpoint, so 15,000 square foot minimum size lots, we're looking at, you know, roughly potentially about, if, looking at some schematics that we've drawn up based on the soil, the preliminary soils that we've gone out and evaluated on this property, you're looking at roughly about five or six acres of soils that we'll be setting aside, setting aside is, you know, the step system for the lots. So we're looking at roughly about 75 to 85 lots maximum that we could sustain on that property based on utilizing a step system over there.
With, with an R-15?
With that, R, that a 15,000 square foot minimum lot size.
So you said 85 lots you thought would be the max?
Probably about the max, just based on the amount of soils. We've done a preliminary analysis on us, our soil sound has gone, done a preliminary analysis, come back, give us the generalized area. We've kind of sketched up something just to get an idea about what we can potentially yield out of this, and that's where we're kind of yielding at this point in time.
If you're going down to an R-15 and you're not going to be a PUD, are you, what percentage do you think you'll have commonery besides your kioshs for your mailboxes?
We've got, just, I can't say because we haven't really gotten into a true full blown design on this. We're just trying to kind of yield, but, you know, between detention and also Aiden, you know, the Aiden branch running along the southern property on that side with associated floodplain and buffering systems based on aquatic habitats, we'll have some open space along that southern periphery between the existing Castleberry subdivision to the south. So we'll have like a little green strip along the southern perimeter of our property behind any lots or something like that along that periphery there for open space.
Any additional discussion or questions?
For me, I just don't feel good about putting it down to RS-15, knowing that part of it is currently, even with the 2012 standards, still set at R-40, yeah, R-40. Especially knowing that, once again, looking forward into the future, RS-15 definitely wouldn't even fit into the future plans.
You went to an R-20, how many lots would you have?
You're going to pull out another 5,000, 8, 5,000 square foot lot. You're looking at about, probably a reduction, about 15, 20 lots.
Any questions, discussion, or any like to make a motion?
Is there like a happy medium that we could adjust it to in between the, the light and the medium? You know, does that make sense? Because the, the light density you said was what, R-40 for the 2012 plan?
The light allows RS-40 or R-20.
Okay.
I say light, it's the low density.
Yeah.
So you've got, the technical is AR 5A, which is agricultural, five acres. RS-40, which is 40,000 square foot lots. RSM 40, which would allow modular homes. And then R-20, which is the single or one or two family, 20,000 square foot lots.
And the current zoning of Castleberry Farms would be R-20, right?
The current for Castleberry Farms is R-20, which is the 20,000 square foot lots.
But that would even match with what's currently there.
The R-20 would match what is the subdivision that is abutting.
Yeah. I feel like the R-20 is a better compromise in this situation than considering what's currently in place for the 2012 plans and what could be in place for the future.
I believe the difference in this situation is Castleberry is actually on sewer, correct?
That is correct.
Or is here, that's just not an option, it sounds like.
Going back to your question about the low and medium, the RS-15 is a part of the medium density. I don't know if you can see the area that is closest to the cast, the existing Castleberry and kind of has that little L chunk in, that is the medium density. So you're looking at a good chunk of the property they're coming, is already considered medium density on the land use, which would allow for the RS-15?
On the west side.
On the west side, yes, sir.
So it looks like it's about split 50, 50 roughly, maybe 60, 40, or 40, 60.
Without known exact numbers, it's split, split fairly, it's fairly close.
Anyone like to make a motion? Have additional questions or comments?
I make a motion to approve the RS-15, and the only reason I do that is because of this ownership.
Please.
I make a motion that we approve the RS-15, and I don't like that, but the only reason I, I go for that is because of the step system. And it's going to force more land use for the, the sewers, and I think unfortunately it may be the way of the future. The RS-20 would still give him more lots than was required.
Can you make sure you talk into that mic, please, sir?
More lots that, the R-20 would give him more lots was required by the gentleman who was talking to us earlier. But I still think the RS-15 will make the cost more easy to spread than it would be if you went to an R-20.
Mr. Anderson makes a motion for positive recommendation to the board based off the fact that they would have an onsite septic system or sewer system, which is going to lower the lot yield.
I'll second it.
Anderson first, Callie second. Any additional discussion? I think the only thing that I would add is we, we've had, I think the last few septic or onsite sewer systems we've had have been R-20 in comparison sake. Is any additional discussion or questions? Ms. Johnson?
Anderson?
Yes.
Callie?
Aye.
Blade?
Aye.
Burks?
Nay.
Butler?
Nay.
Qualls?
Nay.
Jenkins?
Nay.
Schulist?
Aye.
Get what you need, Ms. Johnson?
Four to four.
That's it. All right, we'll move to item five, new business, request for rezoning, requested zoning RS-15. Total combined acreage 31.399, property owned BBJ Properties LLC, 08n Road, map 46 parcel 11, 31.399 acres, current zoning R-20, residential, single family. So this is, Mr. Sullivan, same, same piece. There's a current existing zoning with the 20 approved lots of R-20, and then I guess that other parcel was right next to it there.
That's, that's correct. 20 lots that have been platted, recorded, and they're coming forward that if this rezoning does take place, that they will do a new plat and vacate the, the current one, redesign all of that and go from there.
Mr. Sullivan, this one is completely in medium density, correct?
Going off of the 2012 map, it does show all of this being medium density.
Which is again, the, the 20, the 15, and a few others.
R-20, RS-15, RS-40.
And the current zoning of the, of the rest of the development that it abuts up against?
R-20.
R-20.
Little, if I, if I may speak for a moment.
Yes, sir.
A little bit of the backstory on this, the 20 lots that are platted actually were never physically constructed. So these were done prior to the current stormwater regulations that we are under in regards to stormwater management. So the lots you see platted do not have anything to deal with from a stormwater standpoint. So when the Phase Two and Phase Three of Aiden Woods is brought forth way back in 2004, 2005, in the early 2000s, they weren't required to take care of stormwater like we are today. So that whole section of undeveloped portion of Aiden Woods never was designed in regards to today's stormwater standards. So in order to move forward with the development of this piece of property for Aiden Woods, we would be required to hold back a pretty substantial amount of stormwater that was never planned for initially with the original Aiden Woods development on that side. So more or less, if you see the lots that back up to Aiden Woods in the northern section through there, a vast majority of those lots are actually becoming, are going to become a stormwater detention pond for the remainder of the acreage of the Aiden Woods development. They were asking for the rezoning tonight on that side. So we would be losing land that was not previously lost in the original approval of the Phase Two drawings and the plat. So that's kind of why we're kind of looking at the standpoint of moving this to RS-15 to more or less get back to more or less the same lot yield of what was previously more or less approved with the site plans for Phase Two and Phase Three to make room for our stormwater management that we have to provide for today versus back then.
Excuse me, I know there's a creek back there. How would it affect that creek that runs right through there?
Aiden Branch is what's the divider between, you know, between the other properties we just got to talking about and this one there. So the stormwater will stop, we'll have a storm detention pond prior to the floodplain and any or T-deck regulations for buffering. So we'll actually have a stormwater pond before you get to the creek. So we're, so all the water for Phase Two and Phase Three, we'll have to run that through drainage to get down to that pond where it's then held for 24 to 48 hours to relieve that, you know, relieve the pressure on the branch. So as part of any stormwater management, we're more or less holding the water back so it doesn't get into the creek instantaneously and cause any flooding issues on that side. So that's the difference between what was previously approved for Phase Two and Phase Three. It did not have anything to stop any runoff from development to getting to the creek, whereas now today we're required to provide those stormwater ponds to stop the flow of water from development before it gets to the creek to manage that flow of heavy rainwater or any kind of, any heavy rain event on that side. So that's what we're looking at on this.
Okay, I'm not smart enough to get all that stuff you just said, but what basically you said is that a pond would disrupt the creek?
No, the pond, the pond will be before the creek. We will actually, we will not even actually touch the creek.
Okay, okay, okay.
By T-deck standards, we can't touch that creekway on that side. So we'll build the pond prior to getting to the banks of that stream.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional discussion or questions?
The current zoning matches the 2012 plans. And it would also match the future plans if we were to so adopt them. RS-15 wouldn't adapt, or wouldn't meet both. So for me, I just, I don't see a reason, if I were to make a motion right now, I would make a motion for a negative recommendation to the Board of Commissioners and maintain the current zoning of R-20.
Is that a motion?
Yes, I will make an emotion.
So we have a motion for a negative recommendation. Is there a second? Any additional discussion? So this is a motion for a negative recommendation of the rezoning. Ms. Johnson?
Jenkins?
Excuse me. Can we just, can we have just a teeny bit of discussion?
Absolutely. You want me to go back to us?
Just teeny bit.
Absolutely.
Why? I, I just want to know why before I say yea, nay. Can we clear that up?
For me, the current zoning of R-20 not only meets the abutted lots. It also meets the 2012 standards for medium density, and it also could potentially meet the same standards that we're looking for adapting in the future. So the R-20, for me, seems like the best option because it meets all three of those things. The RS-15 would not meet all three.
Okay, but it would not mess up the stormwater plan or whatever?
That I'm not entirely sure of. It sounds like it would not.
If they were to, to build this with the whatever zoning, they would submit a construction plans that our engineer would review stormwater to ensure that it met our requirements.
All right, okay. All right then.
Any additional discussion? Ms. Johnson?
Jenkins?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Blade?
Aye.
Burks?
Aye.
Butler?
Aye.
Callie?
Aye.
Qualls?
Aye.
Schulist?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. They should send you more often. You're great to speak with.
I'll try to come back as much as I can.
We'll move to bonds and letters of credit. Item one, stable acres, irrevocable standby letter of credit, number 1140005582, in the amount of $65,000, will expire July 8th, 2020.
Motion to call the irrevocable standby letter of credit if it's not renewed by July 8th of 2020.
Mr. Butler, members of the board, just an advisory to you, that bond was extended. We received that it was a six month today with agreement that the work will be completed in that subdivision within six months, so...
No action needed, is it? No action needed or no vote needed?
You may want to offer motion to extend the bond for a period of six months.
Okay.
And that would cover us through the action that took place today.
Okay.
Well, I will amend my motion to extend the bond for stable acres for, or, excuse me, to extend the standby letter of credit in the amount of $65,000 for stable acres for six months.
A motion?
Second.
Second? Discussion? Just a quick question, Mr. Collins, is, this was the one with the private versus public road. Does anything come from that?
Yes, sir. The, the discussion specifically, just as a reminder to everyone, is the consideration of stable acres, the roadway of stable acres, the rights of way, so to speak, being public or private. There was some discussion when the subdivision came about that it was a private subdivision. That's the, what generated the gate that you have today. However, on the plat that was recorded with the county, all of the infrastructure, the roadway, rights of way are recorded as public. In fact, they show up as public on the, on the tax map as you see them today. The discussions that we've had with the homeowners association are that the homeowners association can accept the infrastructure. The requirement for that would be that the developer is going to have to go in and reassign the platted roadway from the city, so to speak, or public to the HOA. The gate would then be allowed to remain and it would be a private gated subdivision. The HOA can decide not to accept that. In that sense, the roadway will become public as any other subdivision street within the city. The developer would remove the gate, all infrastructure to the gate, and it would just be an open street. The developer is willing and is prepared now to resurface the street. The discussions that we've had are to put the final layer on. The discussions that we've had are a specific vote by the HOA to either ratify ownership or to vacate ownership. That meeting takes place later this month. They will make that decision. If they accept the ownership of it, then the, right away will be plat, or will be replatted to them. If they don't accept that, then the gate and the island will be removed, and then the street will be resurfaced so that we can resurface and pave over the location where the island currently exists. So we expect all that to take place within the next 45 days, but through our discussions with the developer, we felt six months was appropriate to make sure we didn't miss any date.
Thank you, sir. So we have a first and a second, any additional questions or discussion? Ms. Johnson?
Burks?
Aye.
Qualls?
Aye.
Schulist?
Aye.
Jenkins?
Aye.
Callie?
Aye.
Butler?
Aye.
Blade?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
All right, move to item two, stable acres Phase Two, irrevocable standby letter of credit, 1140005582, in the amount of $12,500, will expire July 8th. Has this one also been extended six months?
Yes, sir.
So we'll entertain a motion to extend the standby letter of credit for six months. So we'll entertain a motion to extend the standby letter of credit for six months.
Motion to extend the Stable Acres Phase Two Irrevocable Standby Letter of Credit in the amount of $12,500 for six months.
Second.
Burks, Qualls, any additional discussion or questions? Ms. Johnson.
Burks.
Aye.
Qualls.
Aye.
Shulis.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Callie.
Aye.
Butler.
Aye.
Blade.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Yes, item three, Bonds and Letters of Credit, Kyle's Creek Subdivision Phase Two, Section Two Irrevocable Standby Letter of Credit, number 907-1005, and the amount of $70,000 will expire July 17, 2020. Any update on this one?
Don't have anything for that. I know we're, we're looking about a month and a week still until that one expires. Just wanting to get it on early.
That's perfect.
Make a motion to call the Kyle's Creek Subdivision Phase Two, Section Two Irrevocable Standby Letter of Credit in the amount of $70,000 if not renewed by July 17 of 2020.
I'll second.
Burks, Jenkins, additional discussion or questions? Ms. Johnson.
Burks.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Shulis.
Aye.
Qualls.
Aye.
Callie.
Aye.
Butler.
Aye.
Blade.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Item four, Bonds and Letters of Credit, Wynwood Park Subdivision Phase One Irrevocable Standby Letter of Credit, number 900-22960, and the amount of $388,237.50 will expire June 29, 2020.
Again, I've heard nothing specifically about this, but we are still about three weeks out, so that gives some time to get it in before that date.
Make a motion to call the Wynwood Park Subdivision Phase One Irrevocable Standby Letter of Credit in the amount of $388,237.50 if not extended by, or excuse me, renewed by June 29 of 2020.
Second.
Burks, Jenkins, any additional questions or discussion? Ms. Johnson.
Burks.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Shulis.
Aye.
Qualls.
Aye.
Callie.
Aye.
Butler.
Aye.
Blade.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
All right, we'll go to reports for discussion information. City planning staff, Mr. Sullivan.
I have enjoyed the last three years and several months being here with the Planning Commission. Last year, I was offered the position with Public Works and going from doing a couple of different roles. Believe next week I will be focusing more on Public Works and be out of the Planning Department. We have gone long ways in the last three and a half years. We've made big changes, we've made small changes, we have done some great things. There have been nights that I walked out of here after two-hour meetings, just ready to go anywhere, but I think we've made great progress, and I thank you all for that, and I thank you all for working with me, along with me, sending emails, sending texts, saying, hey, get this done, and listening to me say, yeah, we're working on that. But I do want to say thank you. I will still be around. As I was talking with Kevin today, I'm still part of City of Fairview, so if there's ever a need, I'm still going to be right there. You've all got my information. Feel free to contact me anytime, but I do believe this will be my last Planning Commission meeting with y'all. And again, thank you all so much for working with me and getting some things done.
Thanks for ending us on a sad note there.
Yeah.
Thank you for all your passion and hard work. It has been a joy and a pleasure on this side as well. City manager, Mr. Collins, he's moved on pressure to you there?
Yes, just as a, as a qualifier to that conversation, Mike is not going anywhere. We're going through some transitions with several of our departments and trying to figure out how we relieve some pressure off a couple of staff members. Mike will be in one of those. It's a pretty exhaustive role to be effectively running the Planning Department, Public Works Department, and doing building inspections as well. It's just a lot on anyone. So we're looking to, to offer some relief there. It's just a lot to do. So Mike will still be a part of all that, all of our plan review, design review, all of those things, so it's not like there's a cold separation. He's still in the same building. We're just trying to make sure everybody has the ability to effectively do a job and not attempt to effectively do four or five jobs. So we'll, we'll get through that and we'll be okay on there. A couple of things, updates for you. The last meeting we discussed Cluster Box, Mailbox. I sent an email out to everyone just to kind of let you know where we are and to get the information out. We had a very, very productive meeting with the interim postmaster here, Mr. Deckard. He's actually just about out of town. He's been assigned here temporarily until they get the position filled full-time. We've gone pretty exhaustively over the list of subdivisions we currently have and some of the subdivisions that were, have been done in the last couple of years. The short answer to the questions for those discussions are that the Postal Service is going to require for all of the subdivisions we currently have under construction and the current phases of those, that they're going to have to go to a cluster box system. They're not going to be delivered door-to-door mail as we know it today. That includes Phase One of Otter Creek Subdivision, which I believe was the most vocal group, rightfully so, for those questions, and Cumberland Estates. Right now, we have mail being delivered residentially to Cumberland Estates. That's going to change, and they're going to require cluster mailboxes to those sites. We simply don't have any ability as the city to enforce any other decision on the Postal Service. We've met with them, we've gone through the process, they've advised us that that's their standard, and they're not going to back off of that standard, so we're stuck with that. Within that, there are two things to consider, one at the Planning Commission level and the other at the BOC level. Planning Commission level is to go back and maybe readdress our requirements as it relates to cluster mailboxes and mail delivery, just so we, since we've learned a little bit about that system and what the requirements are, make sure that our regulation meets that it is enforceable. Luckily, all of our developers understand that's coming. We have a pretty good group that we work with, but we want to make sure that what we're asking of them can actually be met. We have learned through the post office that the purchase of these cluster mailboxes and the equipment that goes with that associated is done through a series of vendors approved by the U.S. Postal Service. So rather than them having to come in and construct something, they would be able to purchase through the post office things that meet Postal Service regulations, assign those, and those would work, and then the post office would maintain the key and key system for those. So there wouldn't be an issue of, I live in a subdivision, I've lost my key, how do I get my mail? You would simply contact the post office. They would, they would go through that process. So we have learned enough to know how it works. We don't really like the way that it works, we just don't really have the ability to make that change. So as we go forward, we'll do some additional training on that to make sure we, we get that right. The second thing I want to go over with, with you just briefly, and this came up tonight, but just, we will likely bring something to you to reformulate how we consider our bonds and letters of credit. As an example, the last two, the items number three and four under Bonds and Letters of Credit, the, if a bond or letter of credit is on file, the acceptance of that bond or letter of credit on behalf of the city also authorizes the city automatically to call that bond or letter of credit should the infrastructure or work not be completed by a certain, certain date. So this body wouldn't have to go in and vote to authorize to call the bond or letter of credit. What we would have to do is have this body go in and vote to approve the extension of a letter of credit. You as the Planning Commission and as the city need to, I'll get back to post office. Got ahead of myself. The city has the authority to call those bonds and letters of credit, and you as the Planning Commission have an expectation that if you've extended a bond for something, that that work be completed by that date. If there was going to be an extension of that, then there should be an application to this body for the extension, not the consideration of the, of the calling of that bond. As an example, item number four, Wynwood Park Subdivision Phase One, what we should be bringing to you, the developer should come to you and request an extension, and this body then vote for the extension or deny the extension, and the city call the letter of credit and do the work. So as we go into these things and make these changes, what we'll bring to you is extensions of letters of credit, not authorization to, to call them, because you as the developer or the, the Planning Commission should have an expectation of when that work is going to be complete. When is this going to be done? Are we doing it six months, a year, whatever the thing is, so that you're aware of when those are, not just, they, they're going to have to come and answer for why the work wasn't done. So we'll, we'll reverse that role a little bit to make sure that we, we get there. Now, I apologize, let me back up just a little bit to the Postal Service. A couple of things that the BOC is going to have to consider, second to the Planning Commission, is the location of cluster mailboxes for areas that already receive mail. Let's take Phase One of either Otter Creek or Cumberland Estates. All of that is built out, all the construction is done, that Phase One of both of those will likely come to this body at some point for acceptance, and then those would go to the city, where those phases would be accepted, final layer of asphalt's done, we've inspected it, and then we do a one-year maintenance rather than that, and then it becomes the property of the city. What the city is going to have to decide is whether or not you want to allow cluster mailbox retroactively in what will be the city's right-of-way. So as we go forward, a simple example would be Pinnock Place. Pinnock Place is the subdivision that's out on Highway 96, I mean, Old Nashville. You turn in, it's just a loop, makes a sway around, and you remember, you may recall Mr. Cavender at the most recent meeting asking about where in the subdivision can I install this? He currently owns the lots. I don't believe they've been sold, so he has the ability to make some change within a plat. If those lots had been sold, he no longer owns them, then where does the cluster mailbox go? Unless you can convince a private property owner to install that on their property, the only other option is city right-of-way, which presents a whole list of issues that we talked about. Access, parking, what side of the road, do you have to get in and out of your car? Where is it in, in that thing, safety, cross, all the things that go in? So at the BOC level, we'll have a discussion about whether or not to allow cluster mailboxes within the city's right-of-way or proposed city right-of-way. If that's approved, that's one step that the BOC, that the Planning Commission would take for the installation of those. If it's not approved, that's another step, so we'll try to clarify that for you very quickly, so that when these things come back to you going forward for a retroactive installation, we'll have some guidance as to where to, to go on that. So I do want to thank Mr. Deckard at the post office. He has been exceptional to work with. They, they deal with the same regulations we do. He spent a lot of time, is recently several hours with me Saturday of this past weekend discussing all of this to go through. So this has not been a phone call that's gone ignored. He's, he's put a concerted effort in, but he's working with the same top-down guidelines we are, and we look forward to working with him to make it as workable as possible as we can with the least inconvenience, but there will be some. So just want to give you those two updates tonight.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
It's like, like Otter Creek, I think he's meeting with Mr. Deckard Friday to possibly put it at the end of that road, which would be in our right-of-way as a temporary, but in Phase Two or Phase Three, he's going to make a plan for a permanent. So does he come back to us to revise that plat to meet requirements, or is it, you know, that's kind of the open-ended question is, if Cumberland Estates is going to do it in another, in the next phase, does it come back to us to make sure it meets the requirements that we put in, or can we not retroly, retroenforce those? Does that make sense? Kind of a run-on sentence there?
Yes, yes, and yes. Yes, you, you could go back and amend that plat to put those there. Now, they're going to have to find some spot. Luckily, in phases other than Phase One, there's room to do that because that hasn't been platted yet, so you could make that work. I think in that instance, given that the city has not accepted the infrastructure, still owned by the developer at this point, the city has not accepted that, so as long as he's putting that temporarily in his property, so to speak, in his right-of-way, I think that will be within his purview to do. Now, once it becomes the city's right-of-way, once he comes back and says, okay, city, this is complete, I think the city would, would require that all mail be delivered in the Phase Two Cluster Box nearest to all those homes, and the cluster mailbox that was temporarily installed be removed from the city's right-of-way.
Excellent.
So there's a, a path forward. It's just going to, we just want to make sure we work with all parties to, particularly the residents, to assist them through the, through the process.
What if you have, like Phase Two of Kyle's Creek, there's multiple developers that own the properties? So how do you pick which developer has to give up?
We don't. That's, that's the more difficult part of this. The, the residents are going to look to the city for this, but even the Postal Service will tell you, and Bradley told me this Saturday, we were on the phone for a couple of hours, and he's like, the difficult part for the city is you're going to get the calls, but you don't get the say. You're, you're, you're just kind of a clearinghouse for calls. So in that point, similar to Pinnock Place, if those lots have already been sold, something's going to have to be done, or you put it in the city's right-of-way if you can't come to an agreement, and I don't think the city would be agreeable to have that in the city's right-of-way, particularly if it couldn't facilitate it. Kyle's Creek will be a little bit more difficult than some others because of the topography and the terrain. You know, where are you going to park? Everything's going to be uphill or downhill, sight distance, the ability to turn a car, all those things become problematic very quickly. So if everything's level, in a, in a level subdivision, it's fairly easy, and Kyle's Creek or someone like that, there are some challenges there.
And does it apply to Phase One, or is it just Phase Two?
My suspicion is that there, generally, the discussions have been going back phases three years. So if it was a phase that was completed substantially over three years ago, then mail will continue. If it's a phase that has been completed within the last three years, an alternate mail delivery system is going to have to be put in place.
Do we know that for sure, or is that just what everybody's kind of thinking right now?
I'm 98% sure.
And next question, I had a citizen ask me this question. With the cluster mailboxes, y'all may, may not discuss this, when you receive mail that's larger than the cluster mailbox.
I'm sorry, say that again.
When you, when the citizen receives mail that is larger than would fit into that box, do they just leave it like they used to in our college apartment, just throw it out? Or would they actually take it back to the post office?
It'll be back to the post office from delivery point.
Or, or maybe possibly similar, how they do at the post office with a key for a bigger box if somebody got a package or something like that, where the key stays locked in after you open it or something, you know, at a P.O. box.
I assumed it would go back to the post office with them leaving a slip, but nightmares from college where lots of CDs from whatever that place was disappeared.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have to address that. And then also at the, at the Planning Commission level and the BOC level, we'll have to consider this, but Mike brought up a good point, had a discussion this week, in fact, about the marking of residential addresses. Typically, you have a mailbox, so you can put your, your street address on your mailbox, that sort of thing. We're going to have to come about with some way, uniform across the city, to make sure that we are posting and properly marking addresses on residences, be it a curb marker or a home residential marker or some other thing, because absent of a mailbox, GPS is what it is, addresses are what they are, but we've learned through police and fire service that having something properly and fully identified is, is a pretty important. So absent of future phase mailbox requirements, we're going to have to require some positive identifier for each individual address.
That's good. That's, there's some places in Franklin that are doing forensics numbers and the street name on the sign, because, you know, as you go down and you free your road, you're honored, you know?
Just to be clear, this is only for USPS deliveries, so FedEx, UPS, they can still deliver to homes directly, correct?
We're only discussing United States Postal Service, so.
I'm just making sure that my Amazon stuff gets to me.
Whatever, whatever private carrier delivery is, there is, but I, I know the, for United States Postal Service mail, they're going to require that, that they don't deliver mail to individual addresses. I, I would assume that to be parcel as well, delivered by the Postal Service, not one of the private carriers.
Thank you, sir. Anything additional?
No, sir.
Mr. Blackburn, you're going to tell us that you're coming over full-time, or?
Not yet.[1761.33]
Not yet.
You got anything for us tonight, no?
No, no, sir.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Potter, anything tonight? Communication from the planning commission members, Mr. Burks?
One thing I would say is, and I understand when an area is potentially going to go commercial, but we need to manage how it's going to go commercial. Maybe that's starting at one end and slowly moving down, versus just starting right in the middle, right in the middle of people's homes. Something we need to think about is how do we want to get there? Not just can we, but how? That's all I have. Thank y'all.
There. Ms. Shulis?
Nothing for me.
Mr. Jenkins?
I don't think so.
Mr. Callie?
Uh, just want to thank Micah for everything he's done for the planning committee and, uh, continued success with Public Works.
Same here, thank you, Micah, you've been great, we'll miss you.
Qualls, Mayor Blade?
Thank you, Micah, appreciate all your hard work, dedication.
Anderson?
Uh, two things, Micah, I definitely want to thank you, you really brought this place into the twenty-first or twenty-second generation, you brought it into the digital age, to say, you did an outstanding job. Uh, the second thing is, I went to the, uh, Dixon Water and Sewer Meeting last night, uh, they did their social distancing, uh, they presented their budget and their insurance, just a very sound business. They did not have the future sewer plant on their agenda. They say they got per, permits working, but the state, state's not manning the office that they have to deal with, so they're having to deal with people from home. And the next thing that they, uh, brought up, they've been looking for, uh, water leaks, freshwater leaks in Fairview for a couple of three weeks, maybe a little bit longer now. They're shutting down water lines at night, late at night, uh, to try to find the leaks, they're doing it in a way that won't disrupt, uh, the water uses by the homeowners, and then turn them back on in a couple hours. Their number that they put out originally was they're lo, losing about thirty percent of the water that comes to Fairview. Uh, they've got it down to twenty-five or twenty-eight percent right now. They're working hard at trying to reduce the water leaks. Water leaks is lost money, for one thing, but it also undermines our streets and sidewalks and stuff, and the mess that they had over on Chester Road, and, uh, the people's front sidewalk out to the street was taken up, and then a mud hole sat there for over six months, and people trying to dress that up, make it look nice. But that's not the only place in Fairview where the water leaks are causing issues. But they are trying to address those, and they're going at it pretty vigorously. Uh, and they also have, uh, in their immediate works for some, uh, repair work on some of our older sewer systems, so there'll be some disruptions for that. The third thing that they had about Fairview is that they are, uh, in a process of letting contracts to move water lines on Highway 100 in preparation for the sidewalks that are going to come in before the road comes in. So, uh, that will mean probably by fall, uh, that, uh, we're going to see some, uh, reconstruction or, uh, construction or water line movement, uh, by the time school starts back. So anyway, uh, they do have several projects over here, and the la, the last one I forgot was that the, the Fairview Sewer Treatment Plant that's been under reconstruction for quite a while is ninety-eight point something, as they called it, complete. They hope to have it done by the end of next month. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for that update. Uh, thank you guys for putting together that workshop tonight, it's very informational, and Micah, thank you for everything. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
So move.